Welcome back, everyone. We're going to continue with our work session and speak through the proffers, or actually ask questions of the applicant's representative. Mr. Conlon, I'll ask you to come forward and let you have the podium.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Mr. Gillies, Andy Conlon here on behalf of the EDA, jumping in the middle of this case to assist in some of the drafting of the proffers. Certainly, we did have to clarify a number of points. We've taken a lot of information that you provided. Obviously, we're trying to make the proffers enforceable and quantitatively compliant with what the county attorney would take a look at, but we also have the political side, as we've talked about having given some assurances otherwise, to make it crystal clear, maybe in layman's language. So that's some of the things we're going to go back and tweak these proffers a little bit to be sure that's able to do that. We're also trying to create what I would consider the parameters in which the users are allowed to operate. You raised a good point about the construction. We're going to go back there and try to differentiate some of those components that you've raised as well. So we understand the conversation. I think we're real close in trying to put together some of the responses. We want to be able to talk about those, but for example, the buffers and the landscaping within them, trying to come up with the parameters and the design standards for those buffers and what those will be, and supplementing those. I identified that before the hearing, after we submitted the proffers, before the hearing today about some of the landscaping A, B, and C that we often do as opposed to what we have there. So we went through a lot of changes, and now I think we're really massaging some of these to make these a little bit more effective as to what you pointed out. We've been here listening, taking notes, and we're prepared to do that when we get back, we'll get back to you on those. Happy to answer any questions at this time.
Commissioner Sloan?
Thank you. Mr. Conlon, just because I didn't get a chance to ask before here, but since you're working as the representative, do you think the applicant would be open to the idea that because my assumption would be the master, the master design plan would need to be completed before any certificates of occupancy would occur? Do you think that would be something? I think there's a bit of a, you know, there's a little bit of basis with some of the cases that Mr. Allen brings to us, that once the master design plan is written and everything, that it would come back before the commission for approval?
That the master design plan itself would. I don't believe that's what the code requires specifically. That's where we took some of the language with respect to that. We've talked to the staff about what that would require, but I'd have to talk to my client about that. That's pretty unusual, the whole idea of being, I guess, for a public hearing from a standpoint of a master design plan. Is that what you're asking at this point? Or suggesting that maybe is a possibility? Yeah, I'd have to go back and check. Ultimately, you know, when any user comes, for us to put together a master design plan, that would be before any certificate of occupancy. The question would be, which I'd have to dive into, is could we have just one versus having to come back forward for every site plan, which is not what we'd want to do, but put together a master design plan overall? Typically, that's done administratively, but again, I'd have to come back and talk to my client about that to make sure that's something that's palatable for them.
Yeah, I'm not looking to confuse it at all with any kind of site plan approval process.
Right.
But, you know, once, you know, the architectural standards have been defined and the landscaping uses and so forth like that, we need to come back and forth.
And then, just to clarify, when you say come back forth, obviously, that's a hearing and a vote to say that you would agree with that, as opposed to information. Again, I just want to make sure that I'm going back and talking about that to make sure that you're.
Not to be confused with approving users or, you know.
Technical details of stormwater and all that stuff, right? That comes, I understand. All right.
I think the, you know, the staff's idea on the master design plan was to get one created in the next, you know, six to eight months, get that completed long before we would have the first site plan coming forward, so that that first site plan would have to be in compliance with that master design plan, and that that master design plan wouldn't change much as we have future site plans. They would have to be in compliance with zoning, and they'd also have to come in compliance with this master design plan. And the master design plan was just getting to a little finer level of detail than the entitlement of the property to the Technology Village. That was, that was the point behind it, so.
And I understood that. I mean, my understanding from day one has been, you know, there's a desire, you know, there's a desire by some to try and tackle the zoning, and then as more time permits. But I just believe the more transparent we can be, the more citizens know what to expect, you know, in a, in a, in a public process, you know, is always, you know, the extent that we can do, that's a good thing.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're ready to move on to the east case now.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Hilton?
You know, I just want to just make sure citizens and staff and everybody kind of seeing my perspective about it. I think this is a great case. I think that some of the debate that we're having is going to create better, better conditions for the case, right? And so this is just a dialogue that we're having during the work session, and I think that staff has done an amazing job putting this together. You know, you guys are working with every department. I think you guys are doing the right thing, you know, so I don't want to seem like or have the appearance that me personally, that I'm badgering anybody or doing anything like that. I think that you guys are doing a phenomenal job, and let's just continue to work forward on this case and the conditions, and let's make it the best case that it can be, so we can definitely benefit the county and grow the county where it needs to be grown, have jobs and other opportunities here for people. So I'm excited about the project, and I just hope my comments are not taken in any other way than to make this case the best that it can be.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Gillies, we're ready for the east project.
I think we were going to go ahead, and Mr. Donahue, you want to go through some of the east side?
So we're actually, we're actually going to do the same thing we just did for Upper Magnolia West. We're going to have to go through, starting with transportation, followed by utilities, environmental engineering, and then I'll finish up on the planning portion. We're just going to do a review of the proffers and the conceptual plan we have for Upper Magnolia East, and we'll wrap up after that. So I guess I'd invite Brent Epps up to the podium.
And while Brent's coming up, I would just make the comment that we have the four o'clock site plan review session, but it's a very short site plan review. So we'll have time between, you know, four fifteen-ish to five to finish up, and the other items on the work program are not necessary for this. So this, this has our highest priority to get through all of the Upper Magnolia Green stuff tonight, today, if at all possible.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Epps, welcome again.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. For the east case, the transportation proffers break down into six areas. We have the density, cash proffers, dedication, access, road improvements, and phasing. So as it relates to density, the condition reads that'll be an 1,800 student public middle school, 1,000 student public elementary school, a library, and 600 single-family detached dwelling units. The cash proffers, 9,400 for each dwelling unit, and they would, they would be eligible for off-site cash proffer credit, cash proffer credit for off-site improvements, and those are noted as off-site in the, in the improvement section, and we'll go through that shortly. Again, dedication of right-of-way, it's all fairly straightforward, and I don't feel the need to read through the dedications. The access, again, prior to any plan approval, an access plan for Westerly Parkway, the north-south collector Duval or Magnolia Green Parkway will be submitted to and approved by us, and there's a condition that no single-family, no residential single-family lot will have direct access to Westerly, the north-south collector Duval or Magnolia Green Parkway. Moving into the road improvement section, again, off-site improvements, reconstruction of Otterdale Road and Duval Road intersection, which would include any realignment and construction of turn lanes and intersection control. That is intersection seven on your map. Improvements to Otterdale Road and Westerly Parkway intersection, that is intersection 14, again, to include additional pavement, a channelized right turn from Westerly Parkway to Otterdale Road, and the appropriate southbound free-flow acceleration lane on Otterdale Road, as well as traffic control, intersection control, such as a traffic signal or an innovative intersection. Again, another off-site improvement would be construction of two lanes for Westerly Parkway, including pedestrian accommodations and crosswalk improvements from the existing terminus of the north-south collector road. Yes, from, from its existing terminus to the north-south collector road there in green. It's a little difficult to see, but thank you, Steve, for highlighting that. An onsite improvement would be construction of four lanes for Westerly Parkway, including accommodations and crosswalk improvements just for the section west of its, of its intersection with the north-south collector road. Construction of additional pavement at Westerly Parkway and the north-south collector road, intersection 16 there on your map, to provide left and right turn lanes and including intersection control if warranted, which could include a roundabout traffic signal or other innovative Construction of a four-lane facility for the north-south collector road between intersections 16 and 15, which is effectively Westerly Parkway and Duval Road. An off-site improvement inclusive of four lanes for Duval Road from the intersection at Otterdale Road to the north-south collector, including improvements to both intersections as appropriate. And finally, an off-site improvement constituting construction of four lanes for Otterdale Road from Duval Road to Woolridge Road. Section there shown between intersections seven and eight. And then, construction of additional pavement at the north-south collector road and Duval Road intersection to provide left and right turn lanes. I mentioned that earlier. And finally, widening and improving the north side of Otterdale Road to 12-foot lanes, I'm sorry, improving the north side of Duval Road to 12-foot lanes, measured from the center line of existing pavement, effectively improving the property frontage along Duval. Construction, I'll go back to the map here. The, the Duval Road improvements there at 15, between 15 and the, and the western property line, that, that portion is not highlighted for some reason. I apologize for that. And finally, construction of two lanes of Magnolia Green Parkway, including pedestrian accommodations from its existing terminus to the Powellhite Parkway, and again, that's, for some reason, is not highlighted. I apologize for that. We'll get that map updated. Finally, the phasing condition, again, prior to any subdivision or site plan approval, a phasing plan for the improvements will be submitted to and approved by us, and then those improvements, as listed in the proffer, would be made in accordance with that approved phasing plan. And the details of the phasing plan would include, initially, with development of the middle school, the following improvements would be completed. Reconstruction of the Otterdale Road and Duval Road intersection to include realignment, turn lanes, and intersection control as warranted. Improvements to Otterdale Road and Westerly Parkway intersection to include that additional pavement, channelized right turn lane, receiving free-flow southbound lane on Otterdale, and intersection control as warranted, and the construction of two lanes of Westerly Parkway and associated improvements from its existing terminus to the westernmost access to the school.
Brent, just from me and probably some other people in the room, what exactly is a continuous green tee?
So a continuous green tee is an intersection treatment whereby this, the side street is signalized, and when you are turning from the side street onto the main street, you have a, a receiving lane that allows you to accelerate into the primary street, but one lane on the primary street is unaffected by the signal.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, there's a great YouTube that demonstrates that turning, and it's pretty fabulous.
So I saw it, and I recognized that, I just wanted to make sure for the, I was like, you see, I look at it going, this is a really cool concept. They really need to use this more often. It's a good concept. Okay, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair again, planning commission members, Director Gillies. For the record, I'm Mike Nannery, Assistant Director for Utilities. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to follow up with Mr. Sloan's question. He had several questions on the last case, and I didn't have all the details because they were dated back to like 2010, when we abandoned those tributary monitoring stations, sir? And we have eight in-lake monitoring stations now, near where those tributaries dump into the Swift Creek reservoir, so I wanted to follow up with you on that. Thank you for that opportunity. For the east, utilities added one proffer into the existing case. We noted in the case that there is an irrigation requirement in one of the proffers, number nine E at the entrance feature. Part of our comp plan mission is to conserve our precious natural resource in our water system and all that water that we currently use for human consumption and economic development. Believe it was in the comp plan work session that we held when Mr. Sloan asked me about the conservation measures, and I reminded him that utilities was in the public safety and health business, and that every drop of water that goes on the ground is one less we have for human consumption and economic development. And he did exactly that when I said that statement. He shook his head in agreement, so anyhow. We have asked that the irrigation systems, if they are going to be required, have water conservation features, and that the plantings in irrigated beds be native species or drought-resistant to help conserve the need for water. With that said, we are still working through some other minor revisions in the western case. I didn't note them in my previous presentation because they're, they're smaller and they were not additions. I'm happy to answer any questions on the east case.
Mr. Sloan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, would it make any practical sense, so back in the 91 case, there was some specific language around the use of wells for this type of purpose as opposed to the public system? Would it, are you comfortable that the phrase "conservation features" would encompass the use of ground wells as opposed to pulling off the public system for some of these irrigation issues, or what's the department's feeling on that?
Great question, Mr. Sloan. Code actually speaks to allowing outdoor uses, says truck washing, irrigation, that you can use well water both in residential applications and in non-residential applications, as long as those systems are not interconnected with the public system. So that is permissible?
So I may ask staff to maybe look at this one and say, were feasible, you know, for irrigation and so forth, to the extent it's feasible to use ground well systems as opposed to the public system as a priority?
If I may add a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Sloan's comment, that would be, in one of the cases I worked with Mrs. Frye, they had a pond on the, on the property, and we suggested, and Mr. Conlon was actually involved in that, that they use that as an alternative source for irrigation. So not only is well water available, there may be a pond available as well. It's kind of like golf courses do.
That'd be great.
Yes, sir.
And maybe if we could adopt that philosophy on the western side as well.
And we thank you for your support with that, too.
I love our water.
Now that you mention that, my in-laws bought a house in Florida, and it's very common in Florida that you're hooked up to municipal water, and they do a shallow well for your irrigation systems. It's just a very common practice down there.
Virginia Beach area, the coastal plain area down near the coast is quite common, too. Yep.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Nannery?
Thank you, Mr. Nannery.
Thank you. I think that brings us back to Mr. Done again.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, and Mr. Gillies. Basically, environmental engineering has the same proffers for the east as we did the west. So they're proffering the enhanced erosion and sediment control measures, minimal avoidance, minimum disturbance of steep slopes, and then the downstream property protection from flooding.
Have you received the resource protection inventory on this site yet, or is it still being processed?
That was, it's being processed.
Okay. I think we have very many questions right now without seeing that. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Brings us to Mr. Donahue going through the proffers.
Okay, thank you. Again, what this project is, it's Upper Magnolia East, 700 acres, going from R9 in agricultural to R15. So it's a residential zoning district. We are allowing for multiple public facilities to be developed on the property, schools, a middle school in particular, potential for an elementary school, and a library to be incorporated into the overall Upper Magnolia Green project area. And we have a maximum of 600 residential, single-family detached residential units that we have in the proffers. The school complex property, it's a little bit smaller than what we had before. We have 150 acres that we've shown, that we've actually put into the proffers so that we could accommodate for the schools and public uses I just described. That leaves 550 acres for residential development. That's, that puts us at a density of roughly 1.09 dwellings per acre. So that, that's comparable to what you have, it's actually a little less dense than what you have in nearby Westerly and Summer Lake, Summer Lake Development, as, and to the undeveloped Cold Creek community is slightly more dense than this proposal. We have a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. That's what the 15 represents in the R15 zoning district, so pretty good-sized lots. We did have this initial conceptual plan that we shared with the, with the planning commission at the last community meeting, excuse me, at the last work session. We've shared at community meetings as well. We have, we tried to introduce this, this concept of having trails, a network of trails in particular throughout this portion of the, of the development. We've, we've, we identified some, we're calling basically neighborhoods within the overall development, which would be that those R15 areas that are separated by some environmental areas. We don't have any roads shown in this, and, although we did include buffers, but the plan that we have now incorporates these elements, but we've improved upon it to show everybody what that looks like. The planning commission commented on Upper Magnolia East regarding the detail of the conceptual plan, so we've, of course, took that to heart as we did with Upper Magnolia West, and we've now delineated RPAs. We've shown trails, a better network of trails, and how we're going to actually connect to points northward, so we can ultimately have that connection that we want to have to Horner Park, although it is an off-site connection. Roads, as well as I mentioned, they, they have been included in, in the, in the conceptual This is a zoom in on that. Just to point out the trails here, we, the bikeways and trails plan that we, I think, we actually, we showed that at the first, the first work session, work session, the goal of making a connection from points southward at Lower Magnolia to, to Horner Park. This is a key segment to make sure that we do have a trail connection that courses through this property and allows for, you know, that network, network that we envision. We have a couple spots here, and I'll just point these out using this, it'll work for me this time. We have the trail that connects the different neighborhoods. We have this point here that goes into Upper Magnolia West along Horse Pen Creek, and then we have along, along the north-south road, we have a trail connection, we have a connection going into the, 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 it's not showing up? Oh, it is, it's just, it's not very wide here. Let me choose a different color. This isn't working out for me. Okay, this, this is the connection here that would go along Horse Pen Creek and then get to points northward, would connect with, into the trail network that we showed in the previous conceptual plan for Upper Magnolia West. And then, the likely connection that would, of course, we want to have connections into these neighborhoods that we have on the north and, and south side of Horse Pen Creek, but then as we head northward, of course, connections into the, the public use site with the elementary school, middle school, and library, very important. But then this connection here to the pedestrian facility that we'd have along West, Westerly Parkway, and then connect westward to roughly about here we'd shown previously, and then upward where the trail was into Horner Park eventually. So we want to make sure that that connection, and we've, we have made sure that connection is something we will have in the project as we go forward. There is a northern connection that we do have in the trails map here, but not knowing exactly how, what the grade of Poet Park will be, Poet Parkway will be at that particular location, the more likely connection would be that Westerly Parkway pedestrian facility. Okay, moving on. Thank you. Yeah, so these are the proffers that basically just spell out what I was just describing. So we have Poet Parkway, a buffer, the 200-foot buffer, same buffer that we have on the Upper Magnolia West site, and then we have proffer number seven, which is that pedestrian connectivity and trails proffer, which speaks to that network of trails. We've written into this review because we want the trails to be kind of going in and out of the RPA. We've written into the proffer that we want to have the involvement of environmental engineering and the exact location of where those trails will end up being. And we have, in proffer eight, called out a need to have a minimum of 10% of common area within the development. This is a community that's R15. There are a fair amount of areas that will be undevelopable based on the RPA that courses through the property. So we do envision a fair amount of undeveloped portions of that 550 acres that we have, but we also wanted to make sure that there's a, you know, common area amenity that would be included in the project, and we spelled that out. We have taken a look at some of the finer examples we have had of late for residential development projects, and incorporate a lot of the proffers related to architecture and site design, that type of thing, and I'm not, that's a very lengthy proffer, so I'm not, I didn't include it in the slide, but it does address all of those things that I've listed there. Next, again, the master design plan, similarly to what we were trying to accomplish with the Upper Magnolia West site, we want to do something comparable, but for a residential community on the east side, and that we want to make sure we are developing a cohesive, well-coordinated community that has, so we've added the requirement for this master design plan to be developed. Again, we want to address lighting, pedestrian facilities, landscaping, signage, coordinated, coordinated signage throughout the development. I think we'll go a long way in making sure that this does feel like one development, although it is a, it has a lot of different neighborhoods, quote unquote. We thought this was also a good opportunity to address a comment that we got earlier on in the process, to involve the Westerly and Summer Lake communities in the development of the master design plan, so we've put forward some, some language. The EDA came back to us with this as a, as a possibility, and it is an opportunity to bring in those folks into the development of the project. So I had previously shown a slide that looked like this, but it had a lot more going on, on it. This just shows. This just shows, of course, now we don't have the high school site on the Upper Magnolia East development, but this is, again, a preliminary plan, just to give you an idea of how the middle school could be laid out, shifting into the area where the high school was located. It's, I would say, a much more environmentally sensitive plan, preliminary plan. Still more work to be done, but it also leaves areas for what I mentioned before with a future elementary school and perhaps a library to be developed on the property. And that actually concludes the Upper Magnolia East comments that I have. I did want to just kind of close on this last slide here, which is really in reference to both projects, Upper Magnolia East and West, and what the next steps would be.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Donahoe, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Before we leave the site and architectural design, one of the proffers says that sidewalks will be provided on both sides of all public streets. Could that just say, any street, in case some of them might be private?
Yes, we can, we can look at that.
Thank you.
Yep, so in closing, the last slide is just kind of what to do from here. So we've, we're here seeking further guidance from the planning commission. We've held, this is now the third work session, and we've had various community meetings, so, and not to mention we have one planned for March 10th. We've been tracking for some time now a March planning commission, public hearing, but as I mentioned, I'll defer, of course, to the planning commission's guidance and what we'd like to do with scheduling a public hearing.
Do we, let's go ahead and take a, a break from here and go into the four o'clock session? So I'll go ahead and move into our four o'clock agenda. All right, so call to order the four o'clock agenda. This is a time where we look at subdivision cases, cases with site planning and whatnot in them. Mr. Gillies, I think you have something you would, do we have any changes in need made to this agenda, first of all? By any commissioners? No changes? All right, Mr. Gillies?
Yeah, the, the meeting procedures are pretty common and similar to what we go through at the six o'clock, but I'll go ahead and read them. The planning commission makes the final decision on approvals for certain site plans, schematic plans, tentative subdivision plaids, development standard modifications, and appeals of the director's decision. If the commission approves or denies the request, there's no further public hearing. Following this afternoon's meeting, you may obtain information on any case that was deferred by calling 751-4610 and entering the last three digits of the case number. You may obtain information on any case for which there was a final action by calling the planning department at 748-1050.
Thank you, Mr. Gillies. So the first case we have today, which will be presented by Greg Allen, is case number 08TS0122, RREF2TFC Winwood LLC. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and Mr. Gillies. This is a case that you have heard now three times before this. It is a request to disconnect an internal road, Gossamer Drive, from eventually connecting into Otterdale Road. If you'll go to the image, please. This is, the two areas in red are the remaining areas to be developed within the Winwood subdivision. And you can see Otterdale Road there, this internal road, Gossamer Drive, runs somewhat east-west and will eventually tie into Otterdale Road under its current preliminary plat approval.
Oh, you're on the, you're on the presentation for the beginning. I'll just finish this and say, you've deferred this now three times. This is a fourth request for a deferral, simply to continue trying to address the concerns of the neighborhood. Mr. Jack Wilson is here for the applicant, Dave Cloke, if he, if you would like for him to speak to any matter.
Okay, first, do we have any questions for Mr. Allen while he's here? Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson, do you wish to speak to the deferral?
Just that we obviously requested a deferral. Jack Wilson here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, just, we're still wanting to work with the neighbors. We're also working with VDOT to see what we can do to address some of the concerns that are not really within the county's purview, and also with the school board to see about relocating a bus stop that's perhaps causing some of the problems, so, and then you throw the Upper Magnolia overlay into this area, we're working through a number of issues, and we just need some more time to do it.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, with that being said, this is a public hearing, so I'm opening the public hearing for case number 082S0122 in the Matoacan District, RREF2TFC Winwood LLC. Is there anyone present who would like to speak either in support or opposition of this request for deferral? Seeing no one, do we have any public comments that have been received for this deferral? I will close the public hearing. This case is in the Matoacan District. I will make a motion to defer case number 08TS0122, RREF2TFC Winwood LLC till, until our May 17th, 2022 planning commission meeting. Actually, I'm going to rephrase my deferral. I will defer this case to our regularly scheduled May 2022 planning commission meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote?
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Petroski?
Aye.
Mr. Sloan? Mrs. Frye?
Aye.
Dr. Hilton?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, the vote is unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next case we have is 22PS0002, Capital Signs Incorporated, known as Infinity of Richmond Pylon Sign. Mr. Allen, you again give us this case.
Thank you, sir. This case in the Malothean Magisterial District is for a sign for infinity auto sales. It actually is an existing sign that is being moved from one site to this site, but this particular site, if you'll show the, the location, which is the former Hyman Brothers automobile sale site, they want to move the infinity sign here, and the zoning case on this site requires planning commission approval if it's larger than it was required by the ordinance back in the 1980s. We double-checked with our county attorney, and they verified that the ruling from the 19, from that ordinance would still apply, and so it's coming before you because this sign is going to be taller than what that ordinance would allow, which was only 13 feet. The square footage of it is smaller, it's only 18 square feet, and the ordinance would allow 100 square feet. So we're not talking about the size of the copy area, but the height at 22 feet is definitely higher than the 13 feet allowed by that ordinance. However, all the other signs for the auto dealers are larger than this sign on the properties around it. And so staff is supporting this request as being acceptable because it is similar or less obtrusive than the signs on the adjoining sites. I wish I had the pictures here, but for some reason what we have in the system is just these two slides. But it is, this is considered a consent case by staff. We have not had any comments from citizens, and we just request your consideration for this.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is the applicant here today, and do they wish to speak?
I think because staff was on consent, they, they're not here.
Okay. All right, so this is a public hearing, so I'm opening a public hearing for case number 22PS0002, Capital Signs Incorporated, known as Infinity of Richmond Pylon Sign. Is there anyone present who would like to speak either in support or opposition to the request? And if you would, please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Please identify yourself for us.
My name is Joe Howell. I'm with Capital Signs. My wife, Jerry Howell, has been taking care of this, and she's not able to be here today, so I'm taking over, so I apologize if I don't have all your answers. As Mr. Allen said, we haven't got any opposition from anyone with this. We have gone to all the other dealerships. All the other signs are considerably larger and taller. Some of them are even 15 feet taller than the one we're proposing. This was moved from, we removed it from the Infinity dealership that was diagonally across the road. They were under the impression that they could just pick it up and move it and be done with it, and then when we started the permitting process, we found out that, I believe it was 15 feet, he was mentioning 13 feet, but it was an overall height that this one exceeds by several feet. In the subsequent research we did with them, we found out that there was a possibility upon zoning approval to get this permitted, so that's where we are right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Does, do any commissioners have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Is anyone else present who would like to speak for or against the case? Mr. Gillies, have we received any public comments?
I believe no.
All right, having received no public comments, the public hearing is now closed. This case is in the Malothean District. I will turn the case over to Commissioner Petroski for any discussion or a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with staff and make a motion to approve case 22PS0002.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Having no discussion, Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote?
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Petroski?
Aye.
Mr. Sloan? Mrs. Frye?
Aye.
Dr. Hilton?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, the vote is unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you. So that will conclude our four o'clock agenda. We will move back into the Magnolia case. I believe we were at the point where we would ask some questions of Mr. Conlon? Were we not? I think he is left for the day. Do we have any question? Oh, there you are, Mr. Conlon. Okay.
I'm not sure there was a lot of response that he was going to make to the, to the east side. Most of the questions he was ready to talk about were on the west, but here he is.
While I'm here, I might as well speak. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Andy Cameron, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Conlon, sir. Do the commission have any questions on, well, first we'll start with the east case, then we'll circle back to the west case. So any questions on the east case at this time? All right, well, let's go back to the west case.
Mr. Chairman, I don't really have a question in particular about the proffers because I know Mr. Conlon was here taking notes and listening to the comments and questions we had earlier. When might we expect to see revised proffers?
Well, I've been given instructions since I have two hours before the next public hearing that I've got plenty of time to get all the changes done and then get them to, get it to economic development, take a look. We're expecting to have it in the next couple days, get them back to the planning, let them take a look, so I'm hoping by the end of the week we'll have something for you all, so. That's probably Derek calling now, telling me why I haven't gotten them none.
Thank you. So Chairs, do you all have any more comments on the Upper Magnolia cases at the current time? Yeah, let's, let's talk a little bit about timelines. So I'll lead off the discussion on the timelines. Without the natural resource inventory and whatnot here, it sounds like it's going to be a little bit of time before that's processed. I don't know if we're at the point to set a public hearing on either one of these cases because without the natural resource in the east or the west, I don't think we have a complete picture to set a public hearing. And I'm welcome to hear input from other commissioners on that. Commissioner Sloan?
Mr. Chair, I, so I concur that we don't have the natural resource inventory. I, I do believe the natural resource inventory, how do I want to phrase this, has a less of an impact on, on the eastern case than it does the, the western case. You know, when I look at my email, when I, you know, when I, you know, people call and so forth, I, I think the east case is, is in, is good a shape. I don't think we have any really suggested proffer changes and so forth. I, I do think to a certain extent, you know, maybe for the citizens as a whole, if, if the public hearings were on different dates, you know, I'm just throwing some stuff out, but, you know, the two large, complex cases, and I think, you know, from a public hearing standpoint, they, they are two distinct cases, though. I mean, it's not one case, it's two distinct cases, and I think, you know, to, to be able to, you know, for citizens to be able to come in and hear the, you know, concise presentation on the one case, offer public comments on it and so forth. We know we need some enhanced proffers, you know, some new proffer rewrites, we've asked transportation to a little bit of workforce on, on the western case. You know, we, we do know that we're probably three or four weeks out. I think the natural resource inventory has a much larger impact on the western side of the case. You know, personally, just speaking, I think if we were to set a public hearing for the east case in March, maybe tentatively set one for the west case in April, that gives, if something was to come up that causes us some, some problems with the west case, we could, we could always change that, you know, we could change that in March. But we've got the public hearing on the 10th. That's just...
A community meeting on the 10th?
Community meeting, sorry, my apologies, but...
So let's, too, let's go ahead and, does anyone else have any comments on this?
Why don't we set the public hearing on the east case for the March 15th planning commission meeting? And we will decide how things are going on the west case about setting it for April. I don't want to set it for April right now and something happened that significantly changed it, that they have to do some rework on it. I think the east case is actually pretty close, and I haven't really heard a lot from the public on the east case, other than some concerns about the schools and traffic, and some of that's been mitigated with the movement of the high school. So I, I think we're at a good place, so...
Do you feel, now you have the March 10th community meeting, is, will that only be, it'd be five days prior to the...
So I think at that March 10th community meeting, we should have the staff report with the proffers and whatnot in that. Most of that meeting is going to be for reviewing that with the public and getting some of their questions that they want to ask. We'll probably spend the first part of that meeting going through the east case, since that will be the one that we're hearing on Tuesday, and then complete that meeting on the west case, because the east case should be fairly, fairly quick to hear that night with, with the public, at least speaking with them. And, and by that time, we will have the, the staff report and be able to review with the public. Okay, so everybody's comfortable with March 15th? I know it's my choice, but I just want to make sure there was no objection for the east. Okay. All right, do we have any other business to bring? Well, actually, I guess we need to go back because...
We should do that, we should set up a motion.
Oh, sorry. So do I have a, I have a motion to set a public hearing for case number 21SN0675, known as Upper Magnolia Green East, to be for March 15th, 2022.
Second.
I have a second. All right. Madam Clerk, if you'll please take a roll call vote?
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Petroski?
Aye.
Mr. Sloan? Mrs. Frye?
Aye.
Dr. Hilton?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, the vote is unanimous, that motion does pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I think, Mr. Gillies, do you want to present a...
Well, I just, as, in reference to the west, are we going to take any action tonight on the west? Is that the consensus of you all to wait and see on that? If so, do you want another community, I mean, another work session on the west on March 15th? We, we need a little bit of, I guess, ideas to what you'd like to see between now and potential setting of a public hearing.
I think if we do another, another work session on it, I think we would all need probably about an hour, hour and a half on that one, because that should give us the updates on the natural resource changes.
So a work session only on Upper Magnolia Green West?
Correct.
And then a public hearing that evening for...
East.
East.
Any issues with that? Okay. So do we need a motion to put that, since it's a work session, put on the work session? Okay.